It's your local government at work. Live from City Hall in downtown Warren, this is the Warren City Council Meeting on CelineRiverChronicle.com.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lady City. Madam Clerk, recognize the caller.
Here.
Brother.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Note that all are present. Item four is called Approval of Minutes of April 8th.
Move that the minutes for April 8th be approved as mail.
Motion. Motion and second to approve the minutes of April 8th. Any discussion here none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six for one again. Need the minutes of April 15th approved also.
Move that the call meeting minutes for April the 15th be approved as mail.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion here none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six for one again. Madam Clerk, recognize financial statement.
The balance in the general line on April 30th is $329,995.38. Year-to-date revenue is $787,615. Spenders by department and office, menstruate, $82,181.4. Law enforcement, $291,857. Fire was $70,525.82. Building codes, $13,613.86. District court, $31,635.40. Municipal building, $9,021.58. Recreation, $31,234.83. Gulf of Center, $11,37.7. Armory Neighborhood Center, $3,036.97. Other, $41,625.67. Total expenditures year-to-date is $760,13.60, and we're up for the year $27,615.30. Industry fund, the balance on April 30th is $194,673.16. The revenue year-to-date is $99,749.97. The expenditures, $113,557.96. And that's on six days of $13,87.97. Balance and other accounts on April 30th is $2,64,289.61. The revenue is $1,226,882.21. Other expenses and tax growth out is $1,092,553.91. And thus, year-to-date increase about $134,348.40. We have the industry for sure.
Any discussion or questions? Need a motion to approve the financial statement?
No move.
Have a motion and second to approve the financial statement? Any discussion here none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six for one again. Madam Clerk, you recognize?
In April, we received $67,698.71 from the city sales and use tax. Year-to-date total is $246,273.36. And we're up compared to last year, $9,246.40. We received from county sales and use tax, $44,060.17. Year-to-date total is $169,673.53. And we're up compared to last year, $6,279.30.
If that trend continues on the 4% increase, it certainly will help the city budget and the city council dealing with some of the unexpected expenses that will come along. If you extrapolate out, you'll get about $30,000 increase in city sales and use and a $20,000 increase in county, which will be helpful if the 4% trend continues. At this time, all of them are recognized to record any constituents, and we do have some votes assigned in. Ms. Clayton?
Yes, sir.
You can speak for the mayor if you'd like.
Okay. I live at 209 Seminary for the last, well, I've lived there 42 years. And every year, it's been the same thing. The house floods. If we get a toad strangler, a house flood. It comes in my patio doors and goes out the southeast corner of the house. Thank God, there's a hole there for it to go out. I guess otherwise, I'll float out the front door. I have no suggestions as to what needs to be done.
Is the water, is it because of the street drainage in front of you?
Evidently so. I get water from up at Dr. Winslow's house and further back up Pine Street. There's not ditches on the, it's an alley, but it's part of Ash Street to my north.
It's an unused portions, but there's a block there that the residents have kind of incorporated into their backyards, really.
It's ash. It's right behind Larry Derby's house.
Yeah. And some of the ditches have been flattened out.
Yes.
And it diverts water from the ditches into her backyard. And there's a, you can recall, 50 years ago, the gas company had a pipe storage area there. They used to store their gas pipes there. And they apparently, they drive from that unused portion owned to her property, and there's a cupboard about that big around in the ditch. It's about half full with dirt. And that helps to purport water in her house, too.
Has this been brought to Mr. Adams' attention?
Well, we've been over a time or two, as I understand it, trying to correct the problem. But obviously, it hadn't been corrected. So we'll go back, and I'd like Ms. Clayton, if you would, if we'd knock on her door and we'll let you come out and kind of show us.
Certainly.
I'm not familiar with exactly where the covert is she's talking about.
We've got three coves. There's one where my backyard has a drive-in gate, and they put a big cupboard in there.
Took, oh, from Ash into your yard.
Yes.
Is that right?
And then over on the Harris house side, they put a little cupboard in. It looks like it's about that big round. I'm sure it's bigger than that, but it's filled with dirt. Of course, it doesn't do anything.
If it were cleaned up, you think that would solve problems?
I don't think, no larger than that. Well, see, there's not a ditch coming down there to bring it to that cupboard. So it's just, it's just all, they can mow straight up that street.
The portion of ash that you're talking about is like if you were westbound on Ash, and the Ash in front of the museum and all down, then you get to Seminary.
Seminary.
And that, it's actually a city, city street that's kind of just gotten not used through the years. It's, so it's going up through there toward.
Cherry Street.
Cherry Street. Yeah, that's where the drainage.
Mr. Mayor, since you and the street superintendent for me with this, would you ask that we go out and look in there and see what else can be done to alleviate the problem if possible?
Yes, sir. To answer that question, yes. And I'll, we'll try to contact you in the morning.
Okay.
There are no other people that have signed in, so we'll move on to the mayor's report. And you have in your packet the B.C.E.D.C. report. And the executive director here, Donna. And you can see their annual year-to-date budget. And item B is called, at this time, what this is, is a highway department grant. We accepted bids on the city park trail and some Pine Street sidewalk improvements, and the little bidder was Graves and Associates of $139,446. And that's within what the highway department, all this is federal money, and that's within what the highway department is allocated for that project. Need the motion to accept the low bid.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion, second to accept the low bid, $139,446.
Which is quite a bit lower than all the rest of them.
Oh, yeah. And we still have some more, we still got some more coming, projects coming under this type of program. We've got some other streets.
Refresh me on these bids. One of these sidewalks, one portion of it is in the park.
Right, in the city park.
On the south side of the ranch.
Yes.
Comes from Cedar, I guess it's still Cedar over there. It comes around, well, is it going to come back in?
Or type of playground?
Come right back to the playground. Then come back up to Church Street.
No.
And the other?
Get a connect.
The other is still out on West Pine?
Yes.
From the.
Railroad track.
Well, you want railroad track, or you're going to come back and try to get along that?
We'll have to do that one on our, because of railroad issues, the highway department did not want to deal with Arkansas Midland on the railroad. So they started the project on the other side, started at Everett Street.
Okay, so they're not going to come along that old.
We'll do that on our own.
Along that old parking lot.
Which we can do. We'll have, we'll have some money available for that if the sales tax gets rolling.
So it's out west to the railroad and then in the park.
All those in favor of taking the low bid, raise your hand. I see six for one again. Arkansas law requires, and we're glad to do it, that the 2011 audit that you received, that the city council be made aware of it, which you have been, you've all been now the copy. It's also a requirement that the audit be mentioned in the minutes of this meeting or a subsequent meeting after we receive the audit. You have the cover copy of the letter. And Arkansas law got a copy of the audit, and there's a copy of the audit in the city clerk's office. And there's no need for a motion. It just has to be mentioned in the fact, in the minutes. Item D, the street closing and the cultural center use request from the Chamber of Commerce. This is the same as last year, and we need a motion to prove, second motion and a second, to close the streets as listed and allow them to use the cultural center without charge on June 7th, 8th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, and 15th. Any discussion here none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six for one again. We have a commission appointment, Joey Kathy. He does live in the city limits. He is going to build in the city limits, and he would like to be involved in municipal government and serve on planning commission and that. Therefore, I submit his name for a three-year term on the planning commission.
And we immediately approve the appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Joey Kathy to the three-year term on the planning. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, raise your hand. Six for one again.
Now, this has been the first home being built in Warren since when?
That's going to wrong, good.
I mean, new, new home being built here. Okay. Not merely me. Not as much as we like. Okay. The reason, well, go ahead. I'm sorry. We're going through this.
The police chief, Chief Peak's not here. You have your monthly report, and all of them fully recognized.
No business.
Fire chief, Howard Edward, would you step forward, please, or you have your monthly And Alderman Reap, there is some business under your committee.
Yes, we do have one item of business, the approval of Michael Chase Cox as a volunteer fireman. He has been approved by Civil Service Commission. We approve him as volunteer fireman.
We have a motion, is your second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Michael Chase Cox as a volunteer fireman. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, raise your hand. Six for one, none against. Are there any questions for the fire chief? Sanitation manager Mike May is recognized.
I see a listing on here that I'm not familiar with. What is WCA?
That is the company Waste Corp. of Arkansas that hauls our garbage for us now. And they carry it to the Alarretts Land. Used to be picked up by Delta Corporation, and then went out of business.
Tell me, I remember that. Tell me that, have you all discussed the recycling and the limited amount of things that we can put in our recycling?
We are working on it. As a matter of fact, I believe the committee, sanitation committee are working on some ideas that we've got, that I've information that I've found on recycling, different things as far as paper and sleek paper and some things that are going away now, and hopefully eventually getting into some plastic recycling. We're working on it.
Alderman Mose?
No business this time.
Building official Mike May, you have his monthly report. And there was increasing permanent fees this point. Any questions under building official? Thank you, sir. The street committee chairman is recognized, Mr. Burks. There are two items. I believe you all had a street committee meeting, I mean, a street hearing, and I believe you all toured the streets, if that's correct?
We toured the streets April the 16th at 5:30 with all members of the committee present, as well as Mr. Adams. And I made up a list of streets that I mean, that we should do, and I have provided these with the committee, but I will provide these with the committee at this time. And they can look at it and say, okay, they can say, we need to make some changes. But I didn't make the two copies, but I want to give this to the committee, and then we'll come back and say if this is agreeable with them. If they want to add or change something on this list, does that agree with you gentlemen?
Support you wholeheartedly, Mr. Mayor.
We want to go with my list.
I think Mr. Mose would like to see a copy of that.
I can't show Mr. Mose that copy of it until I show my committee.
I understand.
But you're not part of my committee.
Your committee is reviewed, you cannot see a copy before we vote.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Okay, the next thing.
How y'all making it?
The next thing is strikings of, of the street, being striked the street. The lowest bid was $4,448, and that was Anderson Striking. So I believe we accept the lowest bid.
We have a motion to accept the low bid.
Second.
And a second. $4,448 Anderson Striking.
Have we used them before?
No. They've been in business though about 12 years, and they, they are, they're reliable They've bid on ours several times, but they've never gotten a low bid. Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting low bid, raise your hand. I see six for one again. Anything else, Alderman Burke?
I just want to, I don't mean to beat a dead horse to death, but as far as benchmark, has there been a benchmark of where we are in terms of competitiveness in the city, lax cities? What do they have offer economically, educationally, things of that nature? I'm just asking a question. The reason why I say that is that, like I said, I want to beat a dead horse to death, but if I'm alive 10 years from now, you know, I see things continuously going down. I know we're doing some things here, but in order for our city to, you know, continue to survive and progress, and I applaud Armstrong with the jobs and things like that, but when you start talking about recruiting technical jobs, you know, you're not there, and it bothers me. I mean, you can, you know, nine, 10, 12 dollar jobs are still something, but what are we doing? What can we do to look at getting some type of high technical type industry to come to Warren or surrounding areas? I just wanted that to come out of benchmarking that to do that. And I was looking out here on Merrill Street, and I remember coming up as a kid, you could walk that sidewalk, and now it's all covered with grass. And those things, when, again, when recruiters come into your town and they see your sidewalks covered with all kinds of weeds and everything, where it used to be a sidewalk, I don't think they're going to think too favorably of it, you know? And those things bother me. I could be wrong. I could be thinking on the wrong path on what you all are thinking, and maybe I totally ought. But in order for your town to progress, we got to have that type of positive thinking where you can recruit some technical, violent people to come and build homes. If you don't do that, you're going to totally go down. I'm doing, I'm doing it. I know that don't sound like anything, but it's.
Was, I was at a tent and was not able to attend, but was the teaching that they had about how to sell the spec buildings and things well attended?
I have no idea. I was probably not so.
I wasn't invited, so I didn't attend. I did go to the one that was held in McGee. And that one was well attended. But it was consistent of the 10 counties reaching that's covered by Southeast Arkansas and not the development district.
Iris was a local event, intended to try to help train a group interested in selling a spec building, or a dec spec building, or interested in how to sell a particular building. It doesn't have to be the spec that we chose the spec, because that's what we have open. And there was about 18 people there. There was, we had Zach Tucker from the, Joel, what's the word, group, Zach Tucker.
Corner of South, Corner of Stone College.
Joel was there with the city council. I was there. We had city employees. We had some educators there. We had a courtroom court member. We had Kevin Sexton with the community in economic development, and then Catherine Holstrom, who is a regional manager of economic development, or community development with Arkansas Economic Development Commission. And then they, what they did was prepared us to fill out a form called a request for information. And that's what you receive from an industry when they're looking at a town, and we've never had training per se in that. And so we received that request for information after the meeting, and at that point, it's been, that request has been divided up with educators and utility people in my office. And we're attempting to fill it out, and then they will have a group come from Arkansas Economic Development and as a mock visit. And we will entertain them and do what all we're supposed to do and have the information. I think it's a valuable tool. Actually, I was kind of suspect when we first got started, but the more I get into it, the more I see that, you know, having that, all the information you need, fingertips, to be able to just spout off figures is really important when you're dealing with somebody looking at a, looking at a building or an industry coming.
And all this is good, Mr. Mayor, but you know, the appearance of the town really what really counts. And I grew up on the southern side, and you grow up through there now, and you know, you're just back in the jungle, really. And that's, 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 that's the city. You know, that's the city limits. And any part of this town need that improvement. And I don't know what kind of recruiter that you're talking about. Maybe it's changed, but you know, I've been with the corporate recruiters and see what they're looking for. And you know, they're looking for areas that is well-kept, streets are well-kept, houses, but you got all the dilapidated homes and everything now, and it's, it's just, it's something that's going to really have to be kicked up. And I'm not, not everything you can do, but somewhere, it's, it's going to be tough. Somebody might have to step up a lot. And he go through the southern side. Anybody been through the southern side? Look at it, see what it's talking about.
I think the name was.
But you know, that's the city limits.
I think it was used to.
Folks all are paying taxes, too, you know? We just leave it alone.
The streets through there are not too bad, but like I said, to me.
You must say, what were you in? What were you in? You got to speak my mouth out.
I turned on the boy, then went all the way back through to the.
Okay. Well, that's your, maybe that's your opinion on how the streets look over there.
Maybe I might make another trip.
Yeah, maybe you need to make another trip. Let's cut it real short and say the street's not too bad over there.
Alderman Tocree, Community Economic Development.
Just that?
Ways and Means, all mention.
I don't have anything listed, but I just would like to make a comment. In our packet, we do have the municipal health benefit fund, and we have gone from a class four to a class five, and this will be effective July 1st. And I know that you have probably studied the sheet, but when you actually look at the last page, it gives you a breakdown as to what the total premiums are and what our employees will be paying out of their pocket. As I stated at the agenda meeting, that maybe we should consider a wage comp study. When we look at the police chief's report, he has lost another employee. In order to get some continuity, maybe if we could. In order to get some continuity, maybe if we could re-prioritize our spending and, uh, even if it's a bonus or something to assist, uh, in particular, our police officers or the, that particular department and the low wages of our city employees. That's all I'd like to share, but I would like you to take a serious look at the, uh, health insurance premium. And we're looking at somewhere around sixteen thousand dollars.
Yes, I'd like to address that.
Okay.
My ciphering was a little off.
Okay.
It's gonna be.
So we have less employees? That's on the insurance?
No, we're averaging about thirty-eight is an average.
Oh, okay.
And the figure is eighteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars is the increase on an annual rate.
Eighteen thousand.
Two sixty-two, based on thirty-eight.
Okay, that's based on, uh.
Thirty-eight.
Employees.
Employees. It fluctuates in genuine, I tell you, I address that.
It's always something, but he looks like thirty-five or forty, he has four and three.
So we just, we had to pick a number to work with, so thirty-eight would be the most accurate number we can give you on number of employees. Uh, the eighteen thousand dollar increase goes into effect July one. So the back half of this year, the last half of this year, we'll have about nine thousand dollars increase that we weren't expecting in our budget. To my view, that we'll be able to absorb it. I don't intend to try to reduce coverage for our employees. That's one of the benefits of working for the city. What the municipal league health benefit fund has done, if you look at it, the optional coverages of dental and vision were taken out of, uh, the premium. They used to be included in the premium. They've removed them and they priced it a separate item. We will continue to carry that. The other thing that I found since I've been mayor is the ten thousand dollar life insurance policy. There've been two individuals that worked for the city that have passed away while working for the city. They both had this policy, and it was a great benefit to their family, um, at that time of need. It was, it was very helpful. So I don't intend to recommend, actually, I don't want you to do anything. This, we'll just have to put it in the budget for next year and see. Hopefully, uh, health will improve or whatever, and then the premiums won't, you know, be the same next year. They, they rate this twice a year, as you're aware, July and, and January one. So our thinking is to tough it out this year and put the eighteen thousand dollar increase into the budget for next year and see where we fall when we start doing budget hearings.
And just for informational purposes, we only have one more class to go, and that's a class six since we have moved to the class five. And one other thing that I did not know until we were at the agenda meeting, and maybe some of you did, but I did not realize that the housing authority employees and the water department employees was in with the city. I, I thought that their insurance was actually, uh, separate and operated with that.
They received the same rate. Obviously, we are included. The answer to your question is this. They're all part of what's considered city government, even though they're administered by different commissions. Anything else?
That's all I have.
But, but there is no increase until the first of July.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's effective. The physical year is, uh, July one through June thirtieth.
Um, Ms. Anderson, you mentioned something about inquiry, why city employees' offices lead?
No, I just suggested that a wage, uh, comp study be done.
Okay. What do they do? Exit interviews?
No, actually, when you, that should, uh, fall under personnel, where there is an exit interview and the employee express, uh, why they have moved on, but a wage comp is.
Yeah, I know, I know, I understand that.
Okay. You do have that as a part of personnel, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Exit interview?
Yes.
Is that something that's documented right now?
It should be. Uh, all of the ones that I'm familiar with, a person is given an envelope and it's sealed, and it's turned in to the human resource manager, and I guess that's.
That's what they're playing?
Yeah, yes.
It's done.
Well, I don't, no, I don't do the day-to-day operation.
You need to look at me when you ask that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're asking the wrong lady.
I'm a policy person, a person like you.
Oh, I thought, I thought that she was taking care of me.
She gonna, she gonna get you.
I ain't hear my crown lawyer.
I don't do human resources.
She's skilled at it, she does it.
Okay, I'm sorry, you know, I thought.
All right, all right, there.
Good, go ahead.
Let's move on. Nine, are you through?
At good, yes.
All right, here we go. Nine A, planning commission, you have that minutes. Aviation did not meet. Water and Sewer, you have the minutes of the monthly meeting and the balance sheet. Under Parks and Rec, uh, the director's hosting a ballgame tonight. It's the Warren Babe Ruth League versus the Woodlong Babe Ruth League. It started at five thirty, and he's serving hamburgers if you're interested in hearing that, watching that.
Are they popping mirrors?
No. We have a, we had a Parks and Rec meeting and just basically a general discussion, but the dogs, we're having a problem with, and I think one of the aldermen, aldermen has complained about when they've been down there, people letting their dogs off the leash, and we're gonna attempt to enforce that, do a little more patrol and try to hold that down, keep folks with the dogs on the leash. They are, uh, they interfere with some birthday parties and some things like that. We aren't on post signs that say all pets must be on the leash. The other thing is I asked for what they felt might be some improvements out at the ball complex. I had a couple, uh, that I've heard from different parents and different people on. One of them is spectator, uh, covering, cover the spectator seating, uh, I thought was a good idea. And they asked me to find some prices, which I'm in the process of doing. And the other is the boys field, the baseball field, the dirt that's been on there for like eleven years, twelve years, needs, uh, some additional infield dirt. They asked for that. And then, uh, some of the parents, uh, had told me that they would like some kind of playground. They've noticed in other complexes, there's a playground, uh, where they can put their small children while they're watching their larger children play ball. So, anyway, I'll get prices on all that, and we'll see where the city council lands on those kind of things. I did look at, uh, the hospital's gonna allow us to do whatever we need to do, the west side ground. And I did look, talked to, uh, I don't know, what do we, what do you call them, construction man, uh, that deals in topsoil, and he can address Joel those issues around the ball field and the, uh, the chuck holes and those kind of things. Anyway, he can bring dirt, two hundred and fifty dollars a load, I believe, is what he's gonna charge to bring it and spread it. So we'll start that process over on the west side, trying to do some corrections there. It's really a, a good problem to have, because you got, people want to use the field more now. And you have, uh, the soccer folk showed up over there, and, uh, we had the referee between the soccer people and the baseball people, but that's a good thing, 'cause you have so many children involved. So, uh, these issues you just work out, you deal with them and move on, so that's all I have on that. Housing Authority, you've got that report. Cultural Center, if you'll go to the cultural center, we've done some improvements. Uh, there's an account set up, as you're aware, a depreciation account. Uh, that money, those monies are put in by a student in the city for repairs or, or whatever. And the lobby, if you'll recall, the ceiling in the lobby was just terrible. Uh, so that ceiling's been replaced. The interior of the lobby's been painted. The exterior, the front door area has been painted. The next project will be, uh, when we accumulate some more money, we'll be, uh, trying to replace the carpet that's worn out and then do some painting all around the stage. Unfinished business, ten A, there's none listed. Public statements, anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council may do so at this time. Under twelve A, I've already done that. Twelve B is an annual thing. It's a contract with the area agency, and it's, uh, I think everyone's aware of what it does. It's two hundred dollars, uh, to purchase electric fans. We need a motion to, uh.
Okay.
Second. In a second. To give area agency two hundred dollars to purchase fans. Any discussion here? None, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, none against. Any announcements?
I have one, man.
Yes, sir.
South East, South East Community, the Action Food Bank, it's been commodity distribution. Today it was in Hamburg, and on Friday, May the seventeenth, there'll be distribution for Bradley County anymore.
You don't have cheese?
Uh, National Auto, they have pork in a can, leg quarters in ten pound bags, mixed fruit, uh, wheat noodles, apple juice, uh, pea, green peas, red beans. And I may miss one or two, but those are. No cheese.
Any cheese? Yeah, that's what I was.
That big cheese?
Big block cheese. Pay the bill, make a motion, pay the bill.
So move.
Second.
You have a motion in a second, pay the bill. Any discussion here? None, all in favor, raise your hand. Six, six, four, none against. Our meeting is the tenth. Do a motion to adjourn.
Move that way to one.
Second again. All those in favor, raise your hand.